I guess I'd like to, where we all meeting the order at seven o'clock? Um, first item is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Um, we'll call everyone that's here, uh, the mayor now will be, will not be attending tonight. Um, the new business is, uh, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct the Louder Mill Hearing requested by Elizabeth Neely as a result of the motion adopted by the Taylor's Falls Council at the meeting which took place June twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
We can't hear him.
Is this even on?
You gotta, you just have to swivel.
Maybe it's off the mic.
It's up, otherwise it starts squealing.
Um, tell you what, let me start at the beginning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, first purpose, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct the Louder Mill Hearing requested by Elizabeth Neely as a result of the motion adopted by the Taylor's Falls Council at the meeting which took place June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, now I ask that City Attorney Chad Levin's, Levin's review the procedure for conducting the meeting.
Can a louder hearing is, did this on purpose, so I'll speak up even louder.
Even louder.
All right.
I think it's.
I think it's ahead.
No, I turned it up and tested it earlier.
Okay, well, tell you what, a louder hearing is designed to allow an employee the right to respond to allegations made by the employer, in this case, public employer, against them. So it's against purposes to allow her, allow Elizabeth Neely to sell her side of the story. The only people that are allowed to speak is Elizabeth Neely herself or her legal representative. There's no public testimony taken whatsoever. And Mr. and Ms. Neely will be given twenty minutes to present her case, after which time the board will then vote as to what, what they intend to do, rather than the city council about that event. So, with that.
Um, yeah, I guess at this time, Elizabeth Neely and her legal representative can proceed. Sorry, can I just sit right here?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. And Luke, can I get you to speak in the microphone? That's good. Sounds good, is everybody okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Rebar. Can you get back there?
We're down here. I think it's not on or something.
I heard that.
That Troy called me because he thinks this was.
How long now?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks again, Vice Mayor Rebar and, and remain other members of the city council here today. Um, my name's Lucas Kane, I'm an attorney in Figueroa, uh, Anderson in Minneapolis. I'm here this evening, uh, to serve as Miss Neely's representative, uh, in this Louder Mill hearing, standing in front of the city's, uh, notice to terminate Miss Neely's employment. Uh, as a preliminary matter, uh, in notes, I'd just like to point out that the city of Taylor's Falls employee handbook, uh, particularly in the section one seven zero zero point zero three, provides that the city will use progressive discipline with all employees. Uh, at, at this point, uh, it's my understanding, uh, that, uh, Miss Neely, prior to this, uh, notice of termination, had never been previously, uh, issued a written warning, um, and, and the city's jumped, uh, straight to termination, uh, and within its progressive disciplinary policy. Uh, from, from our perspective, uh, council members, uh, their facts in this matter simply do not support a finding of just cause to warrant Miss Neely's termination. Uh, the city asserts, uh, refers and asserts four points to justify Miss Neely's, uh, Miss Neely's termination here. Uh, number one, the city asserts that she engaged in some unauthorized use of or damage to city property. Two, had unauthorized absences from work. Three, violated law and legal repercussions. And four, failed and refused to perform assigned job duties and work directives. Uh, council, we, uh, in reviewing all the applicable facts, uh, we believe that, uh, when these facts are viewed in context, there's no just cause to warrant termination here. Uh, the city's first allegation again relates to the unauthorized use or damage to city property. And in some points, uh, the notice of termination provided to Miss Neely lay out three, uh, different pieces under this umbrella. First is, uh, the city alleges that she changed access to video surveillance cameras to delete other city employees' deputy sheriff access, uh, which required the city to pay, uh, to pay the camera company to restore that access. Uh, as you all are certainly aware, Miss Neely, uh, made a complaint, uh, in the summer of twenty twenty-one, uh, and that complaint involves some, uh, assertions of the use of the surveillance system, uh, by the mayor. Uh, Miss Neely specifically spoke with council member Rebar about the allegations in her complaint concerning the mayor's use of the surveillance system. Uh, and Mr. Rebar told Miss Neely, uh, that the city attorney had stated that no one at the city should have access to the surveillance system. Uh, Miss Neely then communicated, uh, with the surveillance system vendor, and she was told, uh, that the vendor was unable to change the access or, uh, or permissions or controls without coming on site here to the city. Uh, and as a result of that conversation and a product of her concern of unauthorized access into the city's surveillance system, Miss Neely changed her own password, her own access password into the system, uh, and no one else's. Um, she made no other effort to deprive any other individual of their authorized access to the surveillance system. Um, with respect to the deputy sheriff's access, uh, Miss Neely, in conversing directly with the vendor, uh, was told, uh, and informed that the sheriff's office never had accepted access or use of the surveillance system and in fact, uh, did not want direct access and use of the surveillance system. Uh, point two, uh, asserted by the city pertains to the unauthorized, or alleges that Miss Neely, uh, in unauthorized fashion disconnected the surveillance camera, uh, and, and removed information from the surveillance system. Um, it's unclear, uh, based on the attachments, uh, found in, uh, the notice of intent to terminate, uh, specifically what the city's referring to here, um, but it's Miss Neely's understanding, uh, that this refers to, uh, and some events that occurred in January of twenty twenty-two, uh, when she reported at work and noticed that, uh, and was checking on the surveillance system on her own laptop, uh, she noticed that it was not functioning properly and observed, uh, that the drive located, uh, within city hall, uh, appeared as if it had been tampered with in some fashion. Out of concern for the city's, uh, the city's collection of data and maintenance of the surveillance data, uh, she unplugged the drive and locked it in a secure filing cabinet to prevent any other, uh, additional or further tampering. Uh, she then called the security vendor to set up an appointment with them to properly return to the city's premises and, and set up the surveillance system, uh, and, and, and setting up that surveillance system, ensuring that only the authorized individuals had access to that system. Uh, when she spoke with this employee, uh, from the security surveillance system's vendor, uh, from, from this vendor, uh, that employee was confused, um, and told Miss Neely that a technician had been at city hall on previous Thursday, um, and, and this vent, uh, this representative from the vendor also reported to Miss Neely that recorded surveillance data had been downloaded to a separate portable drive and given, uh, given to another individual. Uh, this vendor also reported to Miss Neely, uh, that two years' worth of city, uh, surveillance data had been erased from the city hall drive during this call. Uh, upon learning this information, uh, Miss Neely immediately reported when she had learned to council member Anderson, she also contacted the Shisago County Sheriff's Office to file a report and also scheduled an appointment with the vendor to ensure that the se- security system was reinstalled, uh, in a proper fashion. The city also asserts that Miss Neely removed city data from her city-issued phone, uh, and, and also deleted emails and electronic documents from the city's laptop, uh, which required the city, uh, to attempt to retrieve it. Uh, with respect to Miss Neely's cell phone, uh, it was not a device that she used, uh, with, with regular frequency. She at times, uh, sent text messages to the public works department or the fire chief, um, with, you know, on mundane matters, simply informing them that, that a resident may be there to see them. Um, she believed that this information simply constituted transitory data and, and did not believe that it needed to be kept on her cell phone. With respect to her computer, uh, she previously, it's my understanding that she previously used a, uh, an old Windows seven desktop computer, uh, that was replaced by a laptop, uh, sometime in the fall of twenty twenty, uh, in connection with, uh, uh, the use of some CARES funds and, and related to COVID nineteen. Um, when she began using that laptop, uh, she started to experience some issues, uh, based on, uh, former clerks who had kept old emails on that computer and the use, uh, the sheer volume of the emails was creating technical issues for the use of her computer. Rather than delete those emails, she contacted, uh, Matt Sun to, to put those emails that predated two thousand and seventeen onto a separate hard drive, um, and then to maintain the most recent emails right on her laptop. Then in February twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, she began experiencing some issues with her Outlook email program, uh, because of the amount of emails that were on, uh, housed on that Outlook, uh, application, um, and that issue that she experienced resulted in the corruption of some email files. She was able to fix, uh, and, and sort of backtrack, uh, that corruption. And after she was able to do that, uh, she put emails that had occurred from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty into separate files, again, on a portable hard drive, uh, so that her, uh, her computer, uh, was not burned with, with, with those emails and able to function properly. Um, if she did delete any emails directly off of her Outlook account, those, those emails were duplicate emails that she had previously transferred to portable, to portable hard drive. Um, and again, she was deleting those emails simply so that her computer would function. Uh, any and all other city data, uh, related to city business, uh, was backed up, uh, via the city's banding system stored on Microsoft Cloud. Um, and, and again, um, I mean, these facts demonstrate that Miss Neely did not engage in any inappropriate conduct with respect to her email account. Next item on the city's notice of intent to terminate pertains to Miss Neely's, uh, alleged unauthorized absences from work, um, and further alleges that she had continued absences from work during regular business hours. Uh, again, there is no documentation provided, uh, or, or any additional information in the city's notice of, uh, notice to terminate pertaining to this specific allegation. Um, Miss Neely generally speaking worked her, her regular hours at city hall or otherwise worked from home as authorized. Um, any instances in which she was absent from city hall when she was scheduled to be there, um, was when she left the office to, to conduct, conduct city business by making bank deposits or performing other tasks. Next, the city alleges, uh, that Miss Neely violated, uh, violated laws or exposed the city to some type of legal repercussions. Uh, and again, there are four, uh, excuse me, three, uh, instances under this, uh, under this set of allegations. The first, uh, asserts that Miss Neely engaged in some sort of violation of the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. Uh, again, there's no further information, uh, identified, uh, within the city's notice to terminate, notice of intent to terminate, and the appended exhibits will shed, uh, similarly no additional light on that topic. Um, Miss Neely believes that this allegation may have something to do, uh, with, uh, dissemination of her written, uh, July two thousand and twenty-one complaint against certain city officials. Uh, Miss Neely never provided a copy of this complaint to any resident, um, and was no way involved, uh, in the dissemination of that complaint, uh, and, and any other conclusion to the other rise, she, uh, simply ignores, ignores fact. Uh, next, the city alleges that Miss Neely filed a false pay and equity report, uh, with, with the state of Minnesota. Um, Miss Neely never provided any false information, uh, on the city's pay and equity reports. She completed the report in the same fashion as the prior clerk treasurer and used her, uh, her paid, previous pay equity reports as, as a guide. Um, the city's issue with report seems to be the state's fine and non-compliant. Third, the city alleges that she falsely stated to a liquor license holder that he was authorized to sell liquor, um, based on the attachments provided to be with the intent to terminate, that notice of intent to terminate, uh, seems to be a reference to the goat bar, uh, Miss Neely and email correspondence provided by the city, uh, in, in her email to, uh, to what seems to be, uh, prior to goat bar, simply informed him that he had been approved by the city, uh, for the liquor license, uh, and that he was authorized to sell liquor based on the city's action. Um, if that bar had enough, an obligation, um, or, or some type of revaining responsibility to obtain a buyer's card or additional certification from the state that had nothing to do with the city of Taylor's Falls or Miss Neely's work. The last, uh, the last bucket of information, uh, that the city alleges against Miss Neely deals with her failure and refusal to perform assigned duties and work directives, and there are a number of different, uh, different bullet points, uh, asserted by the city under this topic. First being, uh, a reference to the March twenty twenty-one filing of the pay equity report with the, uh, state department of, uh, with state MMB without prior council approval. Um, Miss Neely did not in any way, uh, report to the state that, uh, that the pay equity report had been approved by, uh, by the council, rather she, she completed that, uh, completed the report in good faith, uh, as a part of her job assignment in the same way, uh, that previous, uh, previous city clerk had done it with no reason to think that there would be any problem with submitting the report. Um, Miss Neely also properly posted the report, uh, on, on the, uh, on the board within city halls, uh, with other employment postings, other employment-related postings, uh, and, and any allegation that she did not do so is contrary to the fact. Next, the city asserts that in, in around two thousand and twenty-one, Miss Neely failed to notify, uh, the mayor of that responding with respect to the pay equity report. Um, it's my understanding that the pay equity report came back as non-compliant on May seventh, two thousand and twenty twenty-one, and after obtaining that notice of non-compliance, she, Miss Neely met with council member Murphy, uh, on or around May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, Miss Neely subsequently learned that council member Murphy had intended to resign from the city council, uh, and she learned that, uh, about a week later on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, it's Miss Neely's understanding, uh, that council member Murphy, uh, did not talk or speak with Mayor Bucay about, uh, about the report after Miss Neely provided her with the information respecting the city's non-compliance, um, and Miss Neely expected, uh, that council member, uh, Murphy would do so in her own personal, personality basis. Uh, after Miss Neely, uh, uh, learned that, uh, council member Murphy was in fact resigning, she communicated to Mayor Bucay on or around June first, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, that the report had came back as non-compliant. Miss Neely also took significant steps, uh, that were required, uh, by MMB, uh, to clarify the reason, uh, for, for, uh, non-compliance, uh, and, and to bring the report, uh, in, into good standing. Next, the city asserts that Miss Neely engaged in some type of misconduct by terminating the council's computer access, uh, to her own computer. Um, again, beyond that statement on the face of the city's intent to terminate, uh, there's little information included, uh, in the attachments that support this allegation. Um, Miss Neely's quite frankly unclear what this may be referring to. Um, it's her understanding that council members could have come up to her at any point in time to look at her computer, um, and she would have been obligated to show any council member what was on her computer. Um, and again, she's just uncertain what, what this, uh, what this allegation may, may in fact refer to. Next, the city alleges, uh, that two thousand and twenty-one into two thousand and twenty-two, uh, that Miss Neely failed to provide accurate meeting, uh, council meeting minutes. Uh, she inserted her own opinion into the minutes and, uh, failed to complete those minutes in a timely, in a timely manner. Uh, the council meeting minutes that Miss Neely published, uh, were, are no way inaccurate, um, and as evidenced by recordings that are maintained of the meeting and when compared those recordings to the minutes that were published, um, in many of the instances, Miss Neely quoted much of the dialogue amongst council members, um, to avoid any, any, uh, type of debate or any discrepancy, um, and to ensure that those meeting minutes were accurate. Um, again, uh, there are no specific examples of inaccurate meeting minutes provided by the city in its notice of intent to terminate or, or any of that. Similarly, Miss Neely never inappropriately inserted her opinion into any of the meeting minutes. Uh, it's my understanding that the city council had always has an opportunity to vote, uh, to correct or change, uh, change meeting minutes that are published by the clerk. Uh, the council never took action, uh, to, to change any, uh, any items within the meeting minutes. Um, and again, no specific allegations or examples were provided by the city, uh, in which they claim that Miss Neely inappropriately inserted her opinion. Lastly, on this topic, uh, the city also seemingly alleges that in the April, May, July, and September two thousand and twenty-one meeting minutes were not on the website as of September, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, and the issue with this was promptly resolved. Um, no one had indicated, Miss Neely, that this was some type of performance deficiency. Uh, it's my understanding that the, as, as of the time that Miss Neely's, uh, being placed on administrative leave, uh, the only minutes that went out on the website, uh, related to the October two thousand and twenty-one meeting, and this had not yet been completed due to Miss Neely's significant workload. Next, uh, the city alleges that in January and February two thousand and twenty-two, uh, there, there was a failure to pay invoices in a timely manner, late payments and past due invoices from Core and Main, uh, dating back, uh, till late two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, attachment eight to the city's, uh, notice of intent to terminate includes invoices from MTBL. Um, these invoices that were appended to the packet were invoices, uh, that were not provided, uh, to Miss Neely in a timely fashion, uh, by Mr. Spanger or Mr. Chris. Um, and when she was provided with those, with those invoices, uh, even after she was provided with those invoices, she had had some significant difficulty in arranging for those checks to be signed by the appropriate signer within the city. Uh, ultimately, those, those invoices were also, also paid in commission. Uh, the city also appended a number of, uh, invoices from Excel Energy, um, that, that were outstanding, uh, as, as of, uh, as of dates included on those invoices. Um, it's Miss Neely's understanding and working with Excel Energy over the course of COVID nineteen pandemic, that there were often some significant delays, uh, in, in the time in which Excel received a payment, posted that payment, um, and was a source of, uh, some, of some confusion that Miss Neely had been called in on a number of occasions to address, again, where she learned that there was some lag time, uh, between Excel's, uh, posting of those payments and, and from when they were sent in. Uh, again, Miss Neely, uh, indicates that any, uh, any checks, uh, for payments that were made, uh, are available on, on the city's banding system, um, and, and the evidence of those payments are readily available. Another one of the city's attachments, uh, to the notice of intent to terminate pertains to a fe- February twenty-one, uh, email, uh, or invoice from the city's fire chief. Um, the, the payment, uh, on the invoice to the city fire chief, uh, was made, um, and any delay that was caused, uh, or that, that occurred, uh, in, in making the payment on that invoice was caused by the fire chief's, uh, failure to provide the appropriate documentation and information to Miss Neely so that she was able to appropriately record and pay the invoice. Next, uh, in, in attachment seven, uh, the city, uh, refers to a number of invoices from Core and Main. Um, again, this email correspondence from, from Core and Main that is appended in attachment seven is unfated, um, and, but from Miss Neely's recollection, this is another instance in which Mr. Spanger never communicated with Miss Neely, uh, to arrange for appropriate payment of the invoice. The city also asserts that Miss Neely engaged in ongoing failure to deposit or track resident checks. Um, any checks that were not deposited, uh, in a timely, again, in a timely manner, came as a result of others within the city not providing those checks to Miss Neely to deposit. Uh, she's unable to deposit checks that she does not have in her possession. Uh, the city also refers in its attachments to the notice of intent to terminate to a March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two email, uh, from a title company with respect, uh, to a, uh, to the, uh, the final bills on the city's water system. Um, Miss Neely was placed on administrative leave prior to the time the March one water bills, uh, would, would have gone out for January and February service, um, and, and had she remained employed, would have been able to address and, and, and resolve this The city also asserts that Miss Neely, uh, engaged in some type of ongoing failure to return phone calls, um, and cites to three separate instances, uh, to support its position. Uh, attachment six, uh, appended to the city's notice of intent to terminate references a letter from November two thousand and twenty-one from, uh, looks like from a resident requesting, uh, making, uh, to be put on the city council's agenda for some reason or another. Um, Miss Neely did not receive multiple voicemails, um, from these residents, uh, as that letter, uh, as that letter alleges. Um, rather, uh, anytime she would receive a call, it could have, it was typically a hangup. There was one instance in which she did receive a voicemail, um, from the individuals who wrote the letter, uh, and that voicemail occurred on the same day of scheduled city council, uh, council meeting. I didn't understand that those days are, are quite busy, uh, for city staff, and she was simply unable to get back to them, uh, on the same day that they had, that they had called in. Uh, a second attachment refers to a January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two wireless complaint call. Um, there's no additional information concerning what that complaint, uh, was, uh, in, in, in the, uh, voicemail that's referenced in the email correspondence. Miss Neely was unable to respond to that specific allegation, uh, because of that. Uh, next, the city references a February third, two thousand and twenty-two email from, uh, Julie Buckholz, um, and Miss Neely believes that this call occurred when she was using three days of, of PTO, uh, and, and any delay getting back to this resident, uh, was a simply result of her working through the backlog of emails and voicemails that she had received when taking appropriate time off. voicemails that she had received when taking a period of time off. There's also a email from Jim Stein of the Minnesota Cities that is attached to this notice of intent to terminate. And you know, in that email, correspondence, the mayor and the city attorney are conversing about an insurance issue which the mayor then asks Mr. Stein about. In Mr. Stein's response to the mayor's email, he specifically states that the city was never in jeopardy of its insurance lapsing and that all payments had been made, so it simply was no consequence for Ms. Neely's conduct in the event that she did not or was unable to respond to Mr. Stein's inquiries. He had his information answered and responded to it again. The city was never in jeopardy of having its insurance lapse and all payments that were invoiced for me. Again, the city also in its notice of intent to terminate asserts that Ms. Neely's cooperation with city council and city staff and some alleged hostility to city council members and staff supports its proposed action here. Again, the city provides no other information as to what those allegations, about the specifics of those allegations, and no documentation regarding the specifics of those allegations were included with the exception of what I believe is attachment two to the notice of intent to terminate and pertains to an issue concerning a firefighter's interaction with Ms. Neely that occurred prior to the city hall being open for business for the day. Ms. Neely promptly reported the incident that she experienced to the mayor. This issue seemingly resolved and found issue and does not, from my perspective, play any reason for just cause here. Again, in addressing what the city believes to be Ms. Neely's ongoing performance failures in the notice of intent to terminate and alludes to her failure to sign off on liquor license applications that were approved by the council. After those liquor licenses were approved by the council, Ms. Neely appropriately sent them off to the state, and any delay in processing of those liquor license applications was not caused by Ms. Neely's conduct. The notice of intent to terminate also references her alleged failure to pay credit card invoices. It's my understanding this is a Menards credit card and led to a situation in which the card was denied. Ms. Neely, it's my understanding again, based on the city's attachments, that this incident occurred on March 28, 2022. At the time that Ms. Neely went out on administrative leave, it was through understanding that the cards were all in working order. And again, this was the same, this incident occurred on the same day that Ms. Neely was placed on administrative leave. And again, Ms. Neely would refer to the council to pay any statements that demonstrate that invoices for these cards were paid promptly and that there was no issue with the credit line on these cards. Next, the city also refers to April 2022 failures to process the liquor licenses correctly and that she sent an unsigned liquor license to a business owner. Again, from my review of the attachments, this seems to relate to Ms. Neely's email correspondence with the provider of the goat. Ms. Neely again simply provided a liquor license that was being, had been approved by the city council, and any outstanding issues with respect to the goat's ability to purchase or sell liquor was caused by their own conduct. I think it's also important to point out that at the time that Ms. Neely was hired, the management of liquor licenses was a job duty held by the prior zoning administrator. And after that zoning administrator had gone, the city's new zoning administrator had declined to assume those job duties. The city also asserts and points to a May 2022 correspondence from the Department of Revenue regarding the failure to pay sales and use tax on time. I just want to point out that, and this refers to attachment nine, the city was not subjected to any type of penalty for the late payments of sales and use tax. Moreover, Ms. Neely is aware that the city received similar notices on February 5, 2018, and June 26, 2017 for late payments of sales and use tax during the tenure of the prior city clerk. To Ms. Neely's knowledge, the prior city clerk was never disciplined in connection with those late sales and use tax payments, and in fact, she's been retired. Lastly, the city asserts that Ms. Neely engaged in some type of failure to submit time sheets for authorization and that time sheets cannot be located, and the city did not include any additional information or documentation supporting that allegation. And Ms. Neely is somewhat uncertain as to what the city is referring to, but Ms. Neely's time sheets, she was always able to make them available, and she submitted them to the mayor, the vice mayor, for their sign off each period. She always kept those time sheets and would file those time sheets in the personnel files, and any time sheets that were not filed at the time that she was put on leave were maintained in a two week file form. Again, council members, based on facts that have been put forward to support Ms. Neely's termination by the city, and in light of the city's decision to shortcut its progressive discipline policy, we believe there's no just cause here to support drastic action of termination compared with the severity of the offenses alleged here and in light of all the facts put into context. Really thank you for your time and for allowing me to leave, and I will wrap up.
Having heard the response of Elizabeth Neely and having fully discussed the basis for the city's actions regarding the employment of Elizabeth Neely, as both the city clerk and city treasurer for the city of Taylor's Falls at the city council meeting which occurred June 20, 2022, and in consideration of the reports of Michelle Sodo and Joan Quaid, which are part of the record in this matter, it is now up to each individual member of the city council to determine on their own what action should be taken. It will be, therefore, it's certain that motion, entertain, excuse me, motion to either confirm the council motion adopted June 20 to terminate the employment of Elizabeth Neely as city clerk and city treasurer immediately, or motion to rescind the June 20, 22 motion to terminate. Due to the discussion that occurred at June 20, 2022 council meeting, in the unique character of a louder note, hearing is no further discussion by the city council over at this time. So at this point in the hearing, could I have a motion? One of the two have to state it.
Sure, I'll take a motion to rescind the termination. Ask for a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Troy. Do I have a second? Have a second? Okay, for lack of a second, do I have the, that motion won't go through. Do I have another motion on that?
I would like to take a motion to confirm the city council motion adopted 6/2022 to terminate the employment of Elizabeth Neely as a city clerk treasurer effective immediately.
Okay, I have a motion by a second.
Second.
I have a second, a motion by Mary, a second by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, and that is the end of the public hearing. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
By Larry, second by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Oppose.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.